Good morning, everyone. Am I echoing?
No, it was the times.
Okay. Uh, welcome to the 2024-25 reorg meeting. And I would like to call this meeting to order. And nominate temporary, I'm sorry, we'd like to nominate a temporary chairperson.
Motion to nominate Sean Eversley Bradwell, sitting board member to serve as temporary chairperson until the president is elected.
Second.
I'd like to call the vote. All in favor?
Fantastic. Thank you. We will continue with our agenda level or 1.4, which is the appointment of the clerk and will entertain motions.
Motion to point Trisha Beresford as the clerk of Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York as for the 2024-2025 school year.
Moved by Aaron, second by Adam. Questions, conversations, debate, dialogue. All in favor?
I believe I have to read my oath.
That is correct. The oath is yours, Tricia.
I, Tricia Beresford, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the clerk of the Board of Education of Ithaca City School District according to the best of my ability. And I'd like to thank the board for nominating me and having me as the board clerk for this year again.
Thank you, Tricia. Thank you for all the hard work. Yes, more hard work to follow. Uh, agenda item two does not require any motions, but it does require folks taking the oath of office. And first up is, uh, Dr. Lavelle Brown, superintendent.
Thank you, Professor. It's getting hard every year to see this, man.
We have reading glasses here.
I know, man. I refuse. Uh, I got, I Dr. Lavelle Brown do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of office of superintendent of schools according to the best of my abilities. It's an honor to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll be signing the book after, I imagine, as well. Fantastic. Uh, next up is always a special treat, which is the administrative oath of newly elected board members or returning board members. And, uh, Dr. Krantweis, we get to begin with you if you would take your oath.
Okay. I, Adam Krantweis, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Board of Education member according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations on your election and three-year term. Fantastic. And Emily, welcome to the board, and you can take your oath as well.
Do you want a microphone?
You should have a microphone. Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, I, Emily Workman, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Board of Education member according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Emily, on as well as your election and three-year term. Uh, the next agenda item is the nomination for the president of the board. Uh, the way in which we did it last year was to accept nominations and go through the process. If the nomination were to pass and the motion were to pass, then that is the person who's elected. If it were not, then we continue with the process. Does that work for board members? So we will entertain nominations.
I would like to nominate Sean Eversley Bradwell, uh, for president of the board.
I second.
Moved by Aaron, second by Karen. Conversation, debate, dialogue, discussion.
Do we do that now or after both people, anybody else is nominating?
Uh, we do it one at a time. So if a person is, um, voted in, then there would not be another person nominated at this time.
What is your feeling about being president again?
Uh, I have two more years to serve on the board. Uh, I'm happy to serve one more year to help someone, uh, understand the duties and then peacefully transfer out after next year. So my last year would be something where I could sleep at night. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I just think of a few times when you've mentioned the difficulty in sitting in the position of a, as the board president, and then also being able to weigh in as a, you know, as somebody who's running the meeting and somebody who has opinions on the meeting. And so that's been something that, yeah.
I just hope you navigate. I, I think that mostly went with, um, the development, um, when we, as a board, had board development as well as discussing the superintendent evaluation that we should have done, in my opinion, outsource someone. So that's where I recall Sean stated at that time that it's challenging being the facilitator of that discussion and as well as providing comments as a board member.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, that's good clarification. Well, I mean, I have lots of questions in general. Um, can you talk a little bit about what your relationship, your working relationship is as a board president with the superintendent? Just in general, like I have no idea how that works and read a lot about you being kind of like a liaison to, like with the superintendent and with the rest of the board, and that you have separate meetings with the superintendent. So I would just like to understand more about that.
Yeah, that's a great question, Emily. Thanks. First, um, any board member, any and all board members could have meetings with the superintendent. Um, we've had multiple board members who have had weekly meetings with the superintendent on a rolling basis, and I would encourage all board members to take advantage of that at any point in time. Uh, the role of a board officer, uh, is agenda setting. So, uh, the vice president, the president, as painful as it is, the deputy superintendent and the superintendent would all meet, uh, once every two weeks to have a conversation about agenda, would poll board members, see what needs to be on the agenda and move from there. Uh, the role of the president of the board is just in that, is to help facilitate, um, conversation, dialogue, uh, facilitate some of the processes, uh, and have conversations, um, when and as. That's, that's probably the short answer. Do that give any context?
Yeah. So can you talk a little bit about what you're, what you do in order to make sure that you're bringing everyone from the board's perspective to those meetings?
Yeah, yeah, that's another great question. Um, I would hope that my, well, we'll find out what my colleagues feel and think. Um, my approach has been to communicate, uh, as often as necessary to make sure folks know what they're voting on prior to, uh, uh, a particular agenda item. So I do send out at times summaries to make sure that folks are aware in advance, so you don't show up to a meeting and vote on something. Um, and then I would hope again, as every board member can attest to, uh, it is common for me to make phone calls, uh, to have direct one-on-one conversations, particularly on issues that may be difficult or may anticipate different opinions. Uh, the good thing is that the democratic process is there for a reason. Uh, boards change, uh, and programs, policies, initiatives change as well, um, as the will of the board. I don't get to dictate the direction of the board. Uh, you need five votes to make that happen. Or someone told me at one point in time, when I first was elected, I am not one board member. I'm one ninth of a board. And I tried to take that to heart.
Thank you.
Well, just to add to the discussion, so, um, and, and Emily, as your role as, um, president at a PTA, you were that point person with the PTA board. And the PTA getting the word out to everyone else as well as that point person as what the exec team to the, um, principal of the school. And also, I see the board president and the board president and the vice president as being that connection and the legwork and getting the agenda and everything like that. Yet, um, the superintendent has always stated anytime we have questions, if we want to see certain documentation, if we want more information, to definitely readily, um, contact him and at that time, our deputy superintendent too. Um, and I've seen like with Sean has been very active on email, active in communicating with the board and just getting a feel for what, what our comments might be and everything, and to make sure that we're delivering to the, um, community as well as facilitating the board meeting, which can have its challenges at times.
Can you, oh, go ahead.
No, I'd also like to add that, uh, you know, I realized last night that I've been on the board's second longest to Sean now, right? Which feels surreal to me because of the, it takes a while to get to know how the board works, right? Five years. I, I like to think of the COVID void as a learning loss for myself. But the knowledge you have just by being a board member and understanding how it works and the mistakes you make early on, because you do, uh, it, it is nice to have leadership of someone who, how many years have you served on the board?
Can I say it?
Please.
Uh, this is, this will be my fifteenth year.
Right. So I, I mean, it takes a while to get a feel for how this works. And Sean knows how to do it like that.
And, and admits when he doesn't know and goes to our lawyers if needing clarification and so forth. Never make, um, never make a step ahead of himself. Always wants to find out the exact information to deliver to the board as well as deliver to the community.
Can you talk a little bit about your leadership role in the evaluation of the superintendent and what, um, what opportunity you have to influence? And I don't mean in a negative way, but just kind of over that process and of choosing the, um, the measures that are being used outside of like the rest of the board?
I don't think I have any more influence than any other board member. I think it's a conversation. We decided collectively on a, a tool to use. Um, I hope as was stated, um, we continue to decide maybe on a, a third-party evaluator for moving forward. I think I've said that in public before, if not, I have no problem saying it, uh, now. I don't think that the board officers, and I, I think I should be clear to not just say the board president, because it really is the board officers. I don't think the board officers, um, dictate any of that. It's, it's much more of a conversation. The board agrees to go in this way, great. Thankfully, a great deal of, uh, respect from my board colleagues who would also hold full accountable. Uh, so that's the, the process. We, we do it collectively.
Anybody, I feel like I'm just dominating.
Well, and I think I said before we jumped on that you should ask questions, right? This is the time to ask questions. Absolutely.
Can you talk about whether your approach to presiding over the board may change or in what way it might be responsive to the kind of message that I think that the electorate put out this year about wanting change or, or, or being more expressive about the things that they did want? Do you think that that will impact your, the way that you approach your role or what your, I don't know, anything about it? Can it? Will it?
I think I understand the question. Can, can I ask, maybe to ask it one more time, just to know?
Um, you've been presiding over, uh, you've been, you've worked with one superintendent, I think, the whole time that you've been on the board, or you, you brought him in soon afterwards. Um, and I think that the electorate kind of spoke up this year about at least wanting some sort of change, not necessarily in the leader himself, but in, in the way that things have been going in the schools in some ways. And I'm just wondering if like the, like what the electorate is asking for and what people have asked for when they've come and spoke at board meetings, if that influences the way that you may preside over the board this year rather than in years past.
Man, I feel, what's the salary for this job? Uh, Emily, to that question, I'll give, um, both, I'll give two answers. First answer is no. Um, and by that, I mean, I hope that I have demonstrated compassion, empathy, understanding, an ability to reach out to folks, uh, having conversations, taking walks, having coffee, being yelled at, all those things. I think that my job in that regard, I hope I maintain that level of humanity and compassion for the community. I'm a thirty-year Ithaca resident. I recognize, and we say this both jokingly and lovingly, that for many folks, that still does not make me an Ithican, right? Uh, but our daughter went to school here. Both my brothers went to school here. Our, my grandbaby is, as she will proudly pronounce now, a fourth grader, because third grade is over. So it doesn't matter when we get there. So in that regard, I don't see that part changing. In terms of the ways in which, how we lead, uh, the kinds of ways in which the, some of the directions that we're headed, um, we have no option. Uh, education is always an ever-changing field. Uh, I think the electorate gave two different messages, the first vote and the second vote. And so there's time for us to spend some conversations about what are both those votes mean? But without question, there are things that need to be changed, because that's just the, the way in which it is. And if the question is, am I open to that? I have to be, um, you know, the day that I stop learning, uh, as an educator would be a scary day for me. So I hope that I've demonstrated growth, hope I continue to demonstrate growth. And if, again, it's the will of the board for me to serve in this capacity, if I have the skills or some skill set that folks want, then I would humbly accept. Um, but yes, I, I, again, as a thirty-year resident, I've been here before and I understand what it means.
Thank you. Can I ask somebody else a question? Or I'll kind of ask you, but Eric, if you want to answer only because you mentioned this as well, I'm just, what are the, what makes it so that a newer board member, that it's harder for that? Like, what are, what is the learning curve that makes it so that it would be beneficial to have a board member who has been doing this work much longer in the presidential role?
Well, thanks for putting me on the spot, Emily. That's what I'm here for. Um, I mean, I'm, uh, there are a lot of other new people here, um, that maybe also could answer this question. I just find, I mean, one of the things I still want to work on, like gonna look at Tricia and I'm like, if it's all on me, it's like a board handbook to really understand. I mean, there are ways to do this, and there's procedural practices, and there's knowing when to consult with our lawyers. There's knowing how to answer emails. There's knowing how to stay in your lane, because a lot of times, um, you'll get people contacting you instead of going through the chain of command. And I have made this mistake many times where I just like email the wrong person. Um, and, and it, to have a leader that under, to have a, have board officers that really understand where to start, who to turn to, who to go to is very important, right? Like, if you don't make a mistake as a new board member, that, to me, that means either you're like Karen and you really read all of, all of the things, because I really respect that, right? Or you make a couple of mistakes along the way and hopefully have colleagues that are kind to you and politely help you go in the right direction.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I will, like, I, I hope, I hope other colleagues maybe have similar. Maybe I'm alone in that feeling.
Sean, I, um, I have some questions for you, but mostly I have some concern about what we agreed to in that um, this emphasis on your behavior and your, um, procedures over the past year is, is good, but it rules out another person, namely me, who's interested in being the board president, having an opportunity to speak as well in, in sort of continuous, uh, or back and forth fashion. So, um, I don't know how we deal with that at this point, but I'm concerned that, um, it's not feeling like a very fair process right now.
I don't know if there's a way for me to, I mean, that's partly why I tried to begin by saying this was the process.
Yeah.
Uh, so I can appreciate that. And I, you and I spoke, uh, last year saying maybe there's a, a different process. And this was what was told to us by, uh, trying to follow some form of Roberts rules, but I appreciate it and for lack of a better word, let's have, had it. There's dialogue we need to have.
May I ask a question? I mean, can Jill self-nominate? And then we have a discussion about pros and cons of both? Is that a possibility? Do you motion to nominate? What's the?
You were referring to this, this specific series, this process?
I'm referring to,
general, like,
I'm referring to, no, I'm referring to what's going on right now. There's, there's clearly a huge advantage um, to going first.
I, which, I think, there may be, um, but that's not something I had control over. So I don't know how to, that's not, that's not a question for me. That's a question.
Well, it's a question about process, I guess, in, in that, how it reflects in this particular instance.
Well, I guess, would it be helpful? Cause I, I follow the procedural, like, cleanness that this provides, but would it be helpful if we could talk about, Jill has said she's interested in being board president, knowing what the slate is, I guess? And so we can talk openly, but then proceed with a vote for the first nominee as laid out? Would that be?
In that, that would make more sense to me.
Okay, so there's sense and there's accuracy of the process. So I'd like to, I'd like clarification because the process, hopefully, we all took time as board members, and this is another thing we have to do, Emily, is read beforehand, right? And go through everything. Um, as the process, as we started into number three, I, I wasn't aware there's another nomination or not, but we were doing a process of nominating a second and going on the vote. Are we now saying let's change that process? Because there was not clarification beforehand. Um, we have to finish the vote. We have a first and a second. We have to finish the vote.
I guess my suggestion is, um, during the discussion of the first nominee, knowing whether or not there are other people interested at that point, whether it's not like a formal nomination, and it's not. But following the process, actually isn't laid out here, but that we're at least familiar with from last year and that you discussed at the beginning, but maybe just discussing during that discussion portion, who else might be interested.
I think this is all part of the discussion, so I don't, I don't find any problem with that whatsoever, right?
Then how to go next? How to move forth with the vote?
Well, if I understood, if I understood what Katie was saying, please correct me if I'm wrong. Right? That it may be helpful for folks to know who else may be interested and still follow the process, but there's, at least folks are aware of what the slate may possibly be.
Yeah.
If this motion were to not pass, then we move on to another nomination as well, right? But the idea would be to understand who may be interested or who may be nominated or, yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be an official nomination at this point in time, but it would be information for folks that may influence their vote. And this is the reason why we have the discussion. So that makes complete sense to me.
Yeah.
And again, I tried to, maybe I should have stopped when I began to explain it, but, um, and, uh, I should have let folks know on another instance in another area, another part of my life, uh, folks are having conversations about, uh, ranked, uh, choice voting, uh, which may be a process for us to consider moving forward. Um, it may, it may even be on the Ithaca City agenda or ballot moving forward, but that may be, uh, some people argue that's a fair process for something like this. Um, that's not where we find ourselves now, it's something we can do, but yeah, let's, let's put out the possible slate and see where folks, see where folks land.
Well, I'll just note that it, in three point one, it says the temporary chairperson will ask for nominations for board president. It then says any nominations to nominate members of the board as board president must be made seconded and voted on by the board. So what happened from my perspective is that one nomination was made and seconded. And then there were no, there was no other obvious opportunity for other nominations.
Yes. And so, and when I had this conversation with our legal counsel, what they were saying is to follow the Roberts rules of order, that if their motion was on the table and then seconded and then voted on, then that proceeds forward. Should that not pass, or should that not fail, then we move on to the next nomination process.
In that case, I call for a vote. Because I, I think this extended opportunity for you to share experiences and thoughts and plans, while laudable in some ways, rules out other people's opportunities to do the same.
Sure, sure. Understood. We can call for the vote. I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Should that pass, then we're on to the next one. Should it fail, then we entertain new nominations.
Can I, can I get another clarifying question then? I, I, I totally agree, Jill. I was kind of thrown by the process because I didn't, it's hard to know where to vote if you haven't heard from both people. So I thought that we were going to have a, a conversation about everyone at the same time. And I definitely feel like that puts me, and I'm sure others, I'm just thinking about my, talking about myself here, that in a difficult position to, to try to figure out what to do. And so I guess my next clarifying question is, if we can, like, once we move on to the second person, let's say that, that it failed the first time, could we then come? Like, I really would love to get to a point where I heard from both of you, and then we could come back, or once you quote unquote, failed, we couldn't reconsider you. Like, how final is that? I guess is what I'm asking.
Or can I withdraw my motion so we can have equal discussion on both parts? Is that a possibility? Or table my motion so we can hear?
Can't table it, because that would then put it on the agenda for the next meeting. No, no, but I understand, I understand the question. Um, how do you all want to proceed?
No, I was just gonna say, I mean, if, if it's sort of like, do we all, if everybody at the table wants to hear from all the possible nominees and discuss, don't we, can't we choose to do that as a board? If there's any objections to it, people could express why they object to it, but if everybody feels like, no, let's hear who the nominees are, let's hear from the nominees, and then we can vote on one and then the other. If anybody objects to that, we cannot. And if everybody likes it, we could do it. Could we do that?
I like that.
And, and any objections to doing it that way? By anybody? Uh, okay. So, I mean, I think, well, I guess we're allowed.
Would you, do we need to officially motion then?
No, we're having, this is part of the discussion and conversation, so.
So are, do, are you gonna officially self-nominate?
Well, I, um, any notion, any motion to nominate members of the board as board president must be made seconded and seconded.
So would we do like official nominations of anyone who's interested in serving the board? Like Karen wants to serve for the board?
Karen's not, so don't bring up mine. Not an example.
Like, so you'd have multiple, multiple nominees. They're not, they're not motions, but they're multiple nominees said officially?
Humbly, uh, and again, we should maybe have our, uh, legal representation here the next time we find ourselves in this situation. What I would recommend is that we continue on with discussion as is. I think that's what Adam was recommending. And so we, if Jill's interested, then we hear from Jill, put it on the table. The motion is still out there. The current nomination is still out there. If at the end of those conversations, we still follow up with that motion, if that motion were not to pass, then we go down to an official nomination of whoever the next candidate would be. But at least there'd be voice, at least there'd be an opportunity for everyone to express their desires, their positions, their stance. Is that agreeable and acceptable? That would keep us with what we currently have.
Yeah, I like that. Thank you. So like, raise your hand if you want to be board president.
Oh, yeah, well, I guess this, it was.
Well, I, I said that I was interested in writing. So I can, let me make a brief statement and then I can answer any questions Emily or anyone else has. Do I want to be board president? Yes and no. Um, the yes part is I have some real concerns about communication within the board and between the board and administration. Um, I've been watching and listening closely for two years and feel like all too often lately, every week, the board finds out about important decisions that have been made that we weren't informed of beforehand. Um, this is of real concern to me. I have served on at least five other boards in, over the last thirty years, um, chairing two of them. And I have never experienced before this level of isolation of the board or disconnect between the board and what's going on. And I know, I know there will be a counterpoint to that, but I can only tell you my experience. And that is that all too often, and I know it's a, I know it's a big district and I know there's a lot going on, but this is the Board of Education. It's, it's not some satellite advisory board of a special interest. It is the Board of Education. And as such, we have an obligation to be aware of what's going on. Not to determine what's going on in all instances, but at least to be aware of what's going on and to express our opinions. Um, which in the case of everyone on the board are both valuable and well-informed, as Sean has pointed out many times. This is a highly skilled board in a number of areas. And we deserve to be consulted. As far as my background, for those of you who don't know me, I'm a retired school psychologist of thirty-five years in the Ithaca City School District. I've lived in Ithaca for over forty years. My son went through the Ithaca City Schools. My son went through the Ithaca City Schools. I'm who I am. I'm pretty vocal. And um, I generally let people know what I'm thinking. And I would continue to do so as a board president. And I think we've gotten a clear message. That was a long time incoming before it was expressed so cleanly. On the board, the recent budget votes. But I think a long time. Has been uh, spent in people thinking about the changes they wanted to see in the district. And I think to start fresh with someone not so clearly aligned with current administration. Would be an excellent path to take for this board at this time. I don't have Sean's eloquence. I do. Commit for my own self. To speaking up when I feel something um, is important to say. And you can be assured that that will continue to be true. And I'll continue to say hello to everyone and smile at them and like them, even when I disagree with them. Questions, Emily or anyone else?
Well, sure, I'll take the first one. Um, thank you. Like you said, you have opinions and you're willing to share them, which I, which I so value and appreciate on the board. As the board president. It's add to quote Sean, like you're. You're just one of nine and you're reflecting the entire board. And my understanding of the board president's role is to do a lot of speaking on behalf of the entire board. And so that might be in times when your vote or your preference for something is not the one that we. Move forward with. And can you talk about how you would kind of balance those two things or if you're. If you feel comfortable balancing those two things?
I don't see them as a conflict because I have extremely clear boundaries. In my professional and personal life. And I know when I'm speaking for myself and I say that. And I know when I'm speaking for other people and I say that. Um, I, for much of the thirty-five years with the school district, I served as the district psychologist on the. District Committee for Special Education. And I was very clear on that committee, sometimes in disagreement with the chair and sometimes not. With, with my professional opinion. But I was always clear that I was speaking for myself. On the basis of my professional opinion, rather than for the committee. And that would continue to be true were I board president. I think it's an obligation of the board president to continue to be a board member. And I don't see it as a possibility for a board member to be silenced. Out of some artificial sense of what, and I'm not saying at all that Sean has done this. I've known where Sean stands. On, on every instance. But I think it's a, it's a fairly simple matter of saying what I think. And I'm not speaking for the board at this point. That's why we have votes. You know, we have votes so that you can say, look, I think this, blah, blah, blah. Everyone else thinks this. Now we'll vote. And we could say. Um, this is past eight, one, or this is past five, four. And then it's clear. Where the board stands. That's, so maybe I'm insensitive, but that's how I see it.
Emily, I, I'd like to add my quick perspective to that question as well. I think one of the things that I've tried to do, which. Is, you know, the same thing that people don't like to see how things are made. Um, but I try not to speak for the board. Um, and we've done so via email, but to say, here's what I'm thinking about responding. Please add, please tell me what is missing, what would you not want in there? And for the most part, that is, we've done that well. Doesn't mean we can't do it better. It doesn't mean we can't do it more, in particular our engagement with our local media. But I've tried very hard to make sure that I was not speaking for the board, uh, similar to what Jill said. I will identify, and I think I do when I respond to emails, I'm speaking as a board member, not as board president. And proceed from there, but I, I absolutely try to make sure that we have uh, all voices as much consent. My job I've always seen in this role for the past few years is to build as much consensus as possible. Just to build consensus, that that's, that's been my job.
I just want to add that. Speaking for myself, the two of you. As president, vice president would be an amazing combo. Um, and I just want us to, as, as we're voting to think of this, you know. It's not against any more team and the idea of the two of you working together, I think could be a really beautiful team to lead the board. So just my thoughts.
That's kind, Erin. I'm sure Jill will agree. We're, we're gonna have to work together no matter what. But, but yes, I understand the, the sentiment and I really appreciate that. So that's kind, thank you. Additional comments, questions? Talking points?
Well, Jill, what have you done to, like, thinking about Erin's comment earlier about. Understanding the processes and the procedures and all of the things that it sounds like takes a long time. To understand, do you feel, this is me coming just completely naively, obviously, because this is my first day. Of like, how long did, like, did, have you learned all of that stuff? Like, does it take a long time? Do you have to, like, read a book? I don't.
I've read lots of books over. Again, I think my experience on other boards carries over here. I was chair on two other boards. And I feel that a lot of the way of working with other people carries over. As does my professional experience. School psychologists don't operate alone. School psychologists operate within a large milieu, sometimes of two or three different schools. And you need to know what people want and what they're thinking. In many ways, we're professional listeners. That's, that's what we do. And then we try to bring something out of the chaos in terms of a plan. So the question of. How long does it take to learn it? Well, I turned seventy last week. I'm cer-, I'm still learning things. And I expect to continue learning things, but if you're asking, do I feel competent to take on this task? My answer is yes, or I wouldn't be running.
I guess, so I have a question. I've several questions brewing, but I'm curious. I guess this would be for Sean. Can you speak to us a little bit about um. The possible. Um, combination of responsibilities that are split between a president and a, and a vice president? To give an idea of. Because I see, I've seen you carry so much over this past year. And so I'm curious as to, is that always what a president is um, tasked with? Or are there other um, forms or splits that a president, vice president uh, positions could take? Like, you've seen it done many times.
I think um. Many of us have gotten to our professional positions. From a variety of personal traits. And so one of the things, uh, and the reason why I mention that is, uh, I've. I am where I am professionally, didn't, never could have envisioned myself being where I am professionally. Without a significant amount of what we would call hustle or grind and. Again, uh, and the way in which I would speak about it. So I make mention of that, that I have oftentimes taken on more than I need to because I feel compelled. I feel uh, an absolute uh. Desire to watch the board succeed. I think I said to folks afterwards, I don't like making mistakes. And so I go back and I replay things and I'm fact checking. And so a lot of that I place on myself just because it's a, I live in a perfectionist world rightfully or wrongfully. The, what I see is the relationship between the president and the board and the vice president is a, is a team. Um, is working together. And for, again, for current board members, you know that many of the emails were signs, Sean and the previous vice president, Moira Lang. Let me, let me not act like Moira doesn't exist, right? Low Moira. Um, but that would be because we would have conversations about what to do. Uh, Moira would often say, I don't agree with that. You should do this. And then that's, yes, you need a different perspective. So I wouldn't see this as being sort of a ranked system. I'd see this as the. President and the vice president need to work together in collaboration with uh, a number of communities to make. Good decisions and, and have a process that works for as many, works for all board members. Um, it is, there are going to be times where we have votes that are. Eight, one, six, three, five, four. Um, I think I've had this conversation and I apologize, but with Adam, um, when we disagree, okay, that's one vote. We have seventeen others coming up, right? And I can't fixate on that one. We're on to the next thing and we have to find a way to do what's in the best interest of our community to make that happen. So I don't know if I answered your question. I take a lot on just because I feel a personal investment in the success of my own community. And I am not, I'm sure we all do. Um, and uh, I see the board officers as working as a partnership. They have to work as a partnership.
Yeah, that is helpful because I think you're reflecting back, like, the, the amount that you take on is seen. And as I think about. It, it makes the, the position honestly intimidating for anyone else to fill because of the amount of work you do for it. Um, and so I'm thinking about if Jill were to be, or anyone else were to be president, how. How things might change, how things might, you know, change for the better, but how large of a role it is.
For the worse.
Change for the worse, right, right? New balance.
That's not about Jill at all, please. Yep. Legit questions, absolutely.
Now, Sean, how, you've been president for two years.
Two years.
Okay, so that people know that it's not fifteen years president and all. We have to get clarifying. I agree with them. There's been, there are definitely split roles because I've seen Moira. Um, do some of the legwork and all, and they come back together as a team. Now, I do have concern with Jill leading as president because communication. Um, I've seen where numerous times like the superintendent, as well as the part of the administrative team, anytime you want something. Um, what is it you want and all? And sometimes you don't ask in advance what, what is needed. Or if you want additional information. And always I've seen in the past several times, put in a resolution on the agenda without any discussion beforehand. Um, which I would appreciate more discussion around things like that. Um. And, and just, um, yeah, just as, it's just been, sometimes there are challenges. With the, um, your leadership in doing things like that in the role of um, communication.
May I respond?
Not, not that anyone can learn, yeah.
Okay. That hasn't been my role. My role as a member has been, to my way of thinking, to get things moving. Um, as board president, certainly my role would be to be constantly taking the pulse, listening. Attempting to synthesize what people wanted and eventually bringing to a vote. So it's very clear what people want. Um, my, my use of resolutions. Has been. I think a fairly successful and traditional way of getting people to discuss things.
Well, which I, I don't object to the discussion, but as a board, I'd like to have you said that, um, sometimes. Things were brought to us as a board in advance and we found out late in, at this stage. But as a board too, one of nine members, I'd like some discussion about certain resolutions before it tries to go on the agenda. Just to say, oh, heads up, this is gonna go out. Can we discuss this? What deliberation? That, we don't have to discuss ahead of time because we're a board, not to discuss behind the scenes.
Right.
But what will be coming up?
I know that, yeah, I, I really need to, to respond to that because I can't think of a single instance where. Where a resolution wasn't presented. Maybe, maybe one instance where a resolution wasn't on the agenda and wasn't presented. Wasn't sent either in a draft form, as an email to each of the board members. Or discussed beforehand at the previous meeting. It did not receive full discussion and that's because again, our discussions should be largely public.
Right, yes.
So, yeah, I. I have strong opinions, but I think I also have strong communication skills when it is appropriate for me to do so. My role as a board member has been to express my opinion. Yeah.
I want to make sure we have ample time. Additional discussion, questions, conversations?
I would really, this isn't to either one of you specifically, I guess, but I, I would really like to understand more about the relationship. The, the, the pre-planning and engagement that happens with the superintendent. And the district and the board president that happens outside of this meeting. Like, I just don't. Like e- even just understanding that, like, it's a. It's not just the board that makes decisions about the agenda for the board. It's like the board and the superintendent, which is just a, a learning thing for me. And is, uh, is interesting um, to hear and to kind of understand how that couldn't be. Muddled sometimes. Um. And so I guess, A, I would like to just understand a little bit more about what that process is, why it's done that way. And then I would love to hear from both of you about, I think. That both of you have quite different relationships with the current administration. And I would love to hear kind of how those, you either would or do kind of manage those relationships. In, in doing that work and, you know, yeah, I'll leave it there.
I'd like to respond first. I know it's true, both of you, um, but, um, it's. Also, a lot of the agenda planning comes from the various committees. There are various committees that were all on like curriculum and so forth, like facilities committed. Committee, I think of last week's, last week Tuesday's board meeting. Where at last month's um, facilities committee, the climate resolution came up, the sustainability committee. Um, educators came and spoke to the facilities committee. They presented the climate resolution. And said that we'd like this to go forth and it was presented to the board some for, to go on the agenda. And then it was on the agenda and as a board that we decided. So like in the finance committee, all of the discussions happen in the committee. Where um, the public is always welcome to the committee um, meetings. And then it goes forth and progresses to the agenda set into.
Um, process wise, uh, we'll just be real. There's a, um, we keep a shared document about. Uh, spacing things out for the year. We would already begin with whoever would be uh, the president. Um, I think Karen identified it well. Most of the agenda items come from the committee. So if the policy committee puts forward some policies, it's gone through there. HR has its own stand, be it curriculum, finance, um, facilities, a good portion of that happens. This happened, well, Jill has asked for resolutions. Any board member is able to put forward an agenda item either for discussion or vote at any point in time. It's written in board policy. Um, and that's sort of how the agenda is made. It's sort of seeing what people want to have on the agenda through committees, the indoor committee updates and proceeding from there. Uh, there are other times where things come to the agenda from our union leadership, various unions. Uh, there are other times where it comes from community members. Um, I probably would say. Adam is probably the one that's probably experienced this the most recently with curriculum, that folks want to have conversations about particular things. And so that comes on the agenda. Karen at one point, you know, had to ask for some things to be on it, you name it. So that's pretty much how the agenda gets set. And, and various ways. And that is usually, it has been virtual since COVID, but I would imagine that it would probably go back to being in person again, whoever it would be. But the officers would sit down with Dr. Brown at this point in time. And set the agenda, um, and try to get it out and let board members know as much as quickly as possible. That's, that's that part. So before moving on, I don't know if folks want to add to that.
Well, I want a chance to answer as well. I, I'm not sure if this is intended is the question, but the way I. I, I'm not sure if this is intended is the question, but the way I will answer the question is. How would I change? The, the interaction or the, the intersect between. Superintendent in particular, or administration in general. And myself as board president. And the answer goes back to. As board president. I am functioning as the voice of the board. And. I would always keep that in mind. And when I was doing something differently, I would say to Dr. Brown or whoever, my, my opinion, my personal opinion. Is this based on my years of experience in the district, blah, blah, blah. I, I, I think what's been lacking in that communication is something coming back to the board. Yes, the agendas are set, but almost never. In my two years, has the board heard back. Here's what we talked about in our meetings with Dr. Brown. And the reality is. It does not seem appropriate in general for board members to be making regular meetings with Dr. Brown. Again, we operate as a board. And, you know, if I had something in particular to share with Dr. Brown that wasn't part of a board agenda, of course. But I would only be meeting with Dr. Brown as the board president and as such, I would. Share with him again, what the sense of the board appears to be on, on various issues. And I would bring back to the board, the results of our discussions. And. From my perspective, that hasn't happened. Maybe it's been so subtle, I missed it, but I would like a regular report saying. Here's what we talked about. And no, I'm not talking about personnel or lawsuits or anything that needs to be confidential. But I think in general. I've been surprised way too often. This year. By decisions that have been made without any real board discussion. And, and I think that needs to change. So that, that's my answer on. How I saw your question.
Just a quick response to that. When, when I find that to be the case. I regularly send emails about the agenda. To give folks a heads up and it does say, call. Email. Let's talk if you have questions about what's taking place. So I try to get folks, for me, the result, the, the follow through, the tying of that, closing of that loop is here's what's coming up on Tuesday. You know, I want to make sure everyone has time to be able to think through it, make sure, I think I just said to you, I'm very much aware as a wannabe historian. That our votes are archived, that folks can go back and take a look. It is part of historic record. And so I never want folks to make a vote without having the information. I think there's a presumption at times that sometimes the board president may know actually know more than board members, and that is not the case. There have been times where I have equally been surprised. And that has been a conversation that has happened with folks, both at the administration level. Sometimes at the building level, even though I try to stay in our lanes, it's not our role and with other board members. So I understand the, the question, the concern. But I also feel like I try my best to reach out to board members or make direct phone calls, which I try to do on a regular basis.
What, what do you think? So are you saying, Sean, that the agenda is the result of, of your regular meetings?
We meet every two weeks. Yes. The agenda becomes the result of that.
Okay. And there's nothing else that should be shared in, in your opinion, in hindsight?
I don't know. I don't know how to answer that question, Joe. And if there is a contentious issue, we've had many phone calls. Where do we find ourselves, good folks?
Well, I mean, I guess. I see strengths on both sides. I feel similarly that there were, there were some times in the last year that I felt surprised by things and I thought. Did I miss a memo? No. Did I not read through everything? No. And. So. I have felt a desire for more. Free and open dialogue. And I think you're Sean, very skilled at running a precise meeting. I think sometimes that's also meant that. We've had shorter executive sessions than. We might have had, we. I guess felt more of just. A free. A permission to speak more freely and to hash things out a little bit more. I mean, our last meeting went very long, but it was, it, we did have, I felt like, I felt like we had. A really good space to talk about things, to be open with. Our thought processes and that was, that was really good. It took more effort and it took more time and it was much more of an inconvenience on the public. But I think as we approach a lot of these, these sticky situations and we do want to build consensus, we might not. Be at a place of consensus at the beginning of a meeting.
Absolutely.
And I think that's something that I've desired throughout this year, just more space to. Hash things out, talk to each other, hear from each other. And then reach consensus. And that's something that I've been desiring. In addition to maybe, I mean, this, this speaking about how the agenda is set. Even if, and whoever ends up being board president, I think I would appreciate because of the timing of agendas leading up to the meeting. Even just a, and you know, we get an email notification when the agenda goes live, right? Even just a heads up that like, here are some things you might want to pay attention to, even if it's like three bullet points. So that I can focus my attention because I mean, I, I'm sure you speak for all of us that it, like, we don't have unlimited number of hours. To dig into the materials before we're making. Not monumental decisions, but decisions that are, that are very substantive. And so those are, those are some things, some more open dialogue. Perhaps facilitated by more trust building and that's, that goes back to, I mean, we've spoken about it a lot of times. We've spoken about a board handbook. It hasn't quite materialized. We've spoken about. Board development sessions, they have not materialized. So I'm seeing areas that are, that are ready for improvement. While still recognizing. The great service that has happened over these past, this past year that I personally witnessed.
There, how, there's no doubt we need more development. Right? There's no, we need more time together to work as a group. Yeah, I mean, and that's also why I sent out an email recently, like, can we start getting some dates on the calendar now, no matter who the board president is or who the officers are? We, we're going to have to work together. It's a new group. Transition takes place, right? It's so. And I think the officers are going to change no matter what, whether I'm president or not president, the officers are going to change. And so it is going to be a time for a little bit of a reset. It is going to be a time for us to think about how we create those spaces. And part of it is just spending time together. Recognizing we're raising families, we have jobs, some of us are retired. You know, that we're doing all these things, but we have to build that in. And I, I do agree that we're, we're getting to a place where some of that trust building can take place. It's going to take more work, but yes, I, I'm, I'm. I'm in complete agreement, having served with multiple iterations of the board. I also know it doesn't happen within six months. But yes, we, we need work. I'm, I'm in agreement.
I just add one thing. I felt, well, yeah, I, I also really liked our last board meeting. I mean, I just felt like it was nice. We all. Got together and I think some perspectives might have changed and it was, it was a nice collaboration. So I appreciated that. I think just one thing, whoever, whoever becomes the next president, I think one, one feeling that I had this year. Was that as the year went on, I was kind of like pulled along a little bit by, by past agendas, like of years before me. Where like, I didn't feel like we sat down during the first week and said like, okay, like. There's some new people on the board and there's some old people on the board and like, let's sit down and talk about like, what are, what are our values as a board? Like, what do we want to do this year? You know, like what do new people think? What do old people think? Like, how do we, you know, take all of the different perspectives and kind of blend them? In a way that everybody could like, talk about their perspectives and then figure out. You know, how to go forward. So I just think, you know, whoever, whoever takes over. As president or continues with president this year. Yeah, I think we should just, you know, like the first order of business in the beginning of the year should be to sit down and just like have some good conversations about. Where do we want to go from here? What do we want to keep doing? What do we want to change? So just feels like a good moment to talk about that.
I'll just ask a, a follow-up question really to the two of you about those comments to, to understand is that. Because. Are you just bringing things up that you kind of thought about over the last year that you're sharing now? Are you bringing things up? Yeah, like you and Katie, Adam and Katie, like are these things that like, oh, I've thought about it now. And as we have a new president or a president like restarting, I want to share these things or are these things that like. You made efforts to, that, that like fell on deaf ears that like these requests already happened throughout the year. I just want to understand.
That's a good question. No, I wouldn't say, I mean, from my perspective, I don't think it fell on deaf ears. And I think. You know, anytime that I've approached Sean to talk to him about something, we've had a good conversation and. Open and everything like that. No, I think I'm just reflecting on, you know, in hindsight, one of the, one of the things that I think. I, I just think for me, like I came on with some, maybe some different ideas or maybe some variations of ideas. And I, I've just personally had a feeling sometimes that it was a little bit of like, I was fighting upstream a little bit, only because. Things had already been established over the many years before I had even thought about running for the board that were already like that. And there were people on the board for a long time who had been there. And I just sort of felt like if I had an idea that maybe wasn't. An idea from a couple of years ago, it, I just had felt like there was a little bit more that I would have to like push through a little bit to try to. Establish that or get some consensus or feel like comfortable enough to even say it's, you know, a couple of times, which was a little bit my problem too. And I, I talked about that at a meeting a little while ago. So, yeah, so I'm just reflecting on it and thinking about how it might be improved.
Yeah.
Regardless, just for the next year.
Thanks.
Yeah. And I'll just echo that. This is more of a reflection. I feel like. To the superintendent's credit, to Sean's credit, there have been repeated. Invitations to openly speak to, like, I mean, Sean says, call me anytime. And I have taken advantage of that. And I think that there's more room for. Board development.
Yeah, thank you.
I think when we've had open conversations as a board, we've done a really good job. You know, compromising on different things where people had different positions. I can think of a lot of examples where. People had different perspectives, but we came to a consensus as a board, you know, the best that we can, but it was good because we had a good dialogue.
Being on this, a school board is a fast moving train at times. So. And we all have our respective life is out, life outside of here too. Just like people had mentioned about board handbook. And thank you Emily for giving us a draft of a board handbook. How many of us actually looked at it and responded to that? Right?
Where did that come out? I never saw it.
That was an email. That was an email within this year. Within this year. Cause matter of fact, Emily, I have a copy in my bag. But the thing is, we never responded to it and never really gave any feedback, but yet. Emily, as a new board member, there's NISBA information, there are policies on the school district website. That we need to adhere to. So it, it is a lot coming on board, on, on the school board and trying to gather all the information and all. And knowing that where we were before, several years before we came on the board, our perspective has to change. Because now we're not looking, I'm not looking at the schools that my children went through. I'm looking at the whole district. So my perspective, my vision has to change.
I am beginning to be cognizant of time. I know that Katie said that I try to run precise meetings. This is not to stop conversation. It's to continue the dialogue, right? I know that this dialogue is going to continue no matter what the process is. Moving forward, but I'm wondering if we are. Comfortable enough to move the process forward and see what takes place and happens, or if we still want to have more conversation and dialogue.
I am. And I also want to just point out like. We all have jobs. Most, or we're retired, but this is not a paid position, right? So there are things that we wish that we could do. That just aren't possible because there aren't enough hours in the day. It's not our day job. And I think it's important to keep that in mind with all the things that we're talking about, like. There are, just like with the way public education is funding, the way that school boards are. In the state, in this state, it's really hard to do all the things that you wish you could be doing, right? Like. There's a reason the board handbook hasn't been completed. It's because. There's tons of other work on this board that has to get done. So, yes, I'd like to move it forward because I, this is supposed to end at eleven and I have another job. So.
Can I ask a quick question to both of you? Sorry. Because I see both of your strengths, I'm curious. Maybe this is a hard question to answer, but like. Jill, would you be willing to be vice president if Sean were president? Sean, would you be willing to be vice president if Jill were president? You're both leaders on our board or people that are willing to serve as leaders. And maybe that's too pointed of a question. I don't, but I would like to know. What form a team may take because, you know, three point two. Or three point, whatever the next one is, the vice president, point four. Is a vice president. So we're, you know, moving right into another discussion.
I'll, I'll answer. I'm willing to serve in any capacity for this board. I think. That. I would be more effective as a board president for the reasons I've outlined previously. Not more effective than Sean necessarily, but more effective than a vice president. And yes, of course I can work with Sean and of course I can work with Dr. Brown.
Are we at a point in time to call the question?
I am.
So clarity of process, just so we're on the same page. The current nominee, this is awkward for me even to say, because it feels grandiose, right? But the crime, it is beyond awkward, right? So the current nomination is for me to be president. So that will be the vote that will be taken. If that vote were not to pass, then we would entertain additional nominations. Just want to make sure everyone understands what would take place. And then we'd go. Hopefully not like the House of Representatives. We're having nineteen different votes, but that may also be the case as well. But that's where we're at before we move to the next one. Any questions about the process?
You just like have a minute? Just like, just a minute?
Okay, what are we having a minute for? Cause we're in discussion for a long time. It's now ten thirteen.
I'm having a minute in my head. That's all. Go for it.
Emily, I'll say all the time, I'm a firm believer in silence. My board colleagues know this.
And I'm a firm believer in the stricler for tie.
All right. Well, if we're ready, then we'll call the question. All in favor of the motion. Awkward as it is for me to be president. The motion does not pass. Entertain other nominations. Oh, my apologies. Sorry, Joe, for a quick, I'm all, all not in favor. Abstentions. Was that abstention or a nate? Did I not give you? Did you catch that? Fantastic. Other nominations. And my understanding is yes, we can revisit again. If need be.
Go back to the.
But we're not there.
I'll move to nominate Dr. Jill Tripp as position of board president.
I'll second.
Moved by Katie, seconded by Adam. Discussion, debate, conversation. All in favor. The motion does not. All opposed? We entertain additional motions.
Did I just mess that up?
No, you don't mess anything up by voting.
Emily, you're fired.
I thought once we just like then.
No, the motion does.
My, my question is though, were there four for Sean? But the motion doesn't pass because.
We need a quorum.
Someone's missing.
Someone's missing.
Not, not necessarily someone is missing. We always need five.
But in this case, we don't have five because.
No, we don't have five because five did not vote, not because someone's missing.
I didn't realize that. I'm so sorry.
You abstained.
Yeah, but I don't, I, I wouldn't have abstained if I sorry.
That's okay.
Only if you were moving on the yes side, then you could apologize. It's um, yeah, if you were voting no, we still would not have five.
I wouldn't change anything.
You can re-entertain.
Um, can I, can I motion? Because, listen y'all, I'm gonna try to, it is ten fifteen and we got stuff to do. All right. So I'm not gonna be shy about this. I'm gonna motion that we do a revote with both Sean Eversley, Vlad. And Jill Tripp with both nominations. Can we, can I motion for a revote for both candidates?
At the same time?
No, Sean first, Jill second, or Jill first, Sean second, second. I don't care. Uh.
You have to make a direct motion, so.
All right. Yeah, I motion that we do a revote with the same candidates.
Well, your motion in one motion at a time.
Uh, I motion that we revote for board president for Sean Eversley Brad.
And I second.
Debate, discussion, conversation? Okay.
Yeah, actually, can I ask one question?
Absolutely.
Can I ask just a very, very pointed question? From talking to constituents who we're supposed to be representing or that we do represent, the biggest concern that I've heard about you being president is your relationship with the superintendent. You're really having brought him on fourteen years ago about being on a board for the majority of that time. It was very much in support of uh most of his policies. And you're like the person left. You're the person that like people see as still kind of representing that deep personal relationship with Dr. Brown. That's the narrative within the community. And so I guess my really pointed question is like, what is your? What's your response to that? What did, what would you say to people who have a lot of concerns about the ability to be both objective and a, a friend to, to the person that you basically are the boss of?
Uh, my first response is call me. Let's have the conversation. Let's talk. Lunch. Coffee, tea. Maybe something with a corn base depending on who you are. Uh, let's have that conversation. Um, the second part, and I don't mean this, I, I so appreciate the question. Um. I'm hoping that folks realize that I would not jeopardize my professional and community standing as if I'm not able to do what's in the best interest of young people. That's my primary responsibility. And folks on the board can tell you, and I know Dr. Brown can tell you that when he is wrong, I am probably one of the first people to call him. Hopefully not with cuss words, but to say, no, no. So I, I struggle with people saying that. I understand what the narrative is. I wonder if that same narrative would be said with a different superintendent and different board members, right? And I have no problem standing on my own merits and I have no problem telling the superintendent when they are wrong, and I have no problem telling the superintendent when they're right.
If, can I, I, I don't mean to overstep here as well, but you know, after the student of color summit and the, 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 the language about, you know, having it only be students of color, we got vile voicemails and both.
We didn't get them.
No, no, we meaning board people and Dr. Brown. People were at Dr. Brown's house. People were at, like Sean left town, right? I, I, we spoke about this in a meeting and both Sean and Dr. Brown have said that they didn't want to talk about it because they're done talking about it. So I, I, I think that there's a fine line between people saying they don't want, you know, they want new board representation and the color of someone's skin. Let's be real here, okay? Because I've been on this board. Sean's been president two years and he's been a really good president. And before that, the leadership was very different. And so when, when we navigate this and we hear what constituents say, I get that, but we also see the other side of and, and sometimes we're afraid to say racism because the anti-racist bite back or whatever, but my God, the stuff that we, they've had to hear and we've heard part of, and I have no idea how it is to walk in that world, but the hate that they get and yet Sean still wants to do the job, like I am all for what our constituents want, but we also hear the other side of the racism and the bigotry and it, and it's LGBTQ as well and Asians were attacked in the one voicemail, but nobody else was showing up people's houses except for those two as far as I know. So I, I, I take with a grain of salt, like I care deeply what our constituents have to say. But they don't know the work that people are putting in. Um, and I, 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 you know, there were other, there were other board presidents that had close relationships with Dr. Brown. And no one spoke out about that, but for some reason they have issues with Sean and we've all having a relationship. And so I have, I have issues with that. And I'm just gonna put that out there.
And um, and, and when you say you represent the community or heard from the community, I'd like to know what percentage of the community, because we have to be careful when we say community, because it's a small percent. It's not the thirty odd thousand people out there, but it's a small percent. And we have to, when we're representing different groups that I heard from some, right? Um, but where Sean, we've been in executive session where the superintendent has been there too, where he said, well, we don't agree with you. Yeah, but more or less, we don't agree with you. I'm not saying any specific thing, but he has made sure if he didn't agree or the superintendent had to state something, he needed to state it. He, there was no, um, there's no friendliness. This is an organization that we're running. We're governing board where we have to, is there certain difficult discussions that we need to have and difficult decisions? That it's not about who likes who.
I feel like this could now turn into a, a huge debate, so I want to be, I want to be mindful. Because I'm the one that said it, I want to provide a very much clarity that I am not speaking on behalf of the entire community. I've also in my various roles within the community, I am engage, I engage with a lot of people. And I definitely do, am not sitting here and going to the, I am not representing people who I think that we can just turn around and say because they have concerns about this, that it runs on racial lines. I think that that's, that's really challenging and it's not going to do us any favors. The moment that I moved here four years ago and started to just get an influx of, and even in just, we'll just say like in the northeast community, if that feels better. But it got so much from people who I know care deeply about education and also care deeply. And again, not all of them, but cared and really respect about a lot of the policies that were happening in this district and also had concerns. And I'm not, I have no idea if there's any truth to this or not. But it wasn't like, oh, there's two black men. Of course, they're friends. It was they are, this is a board of whom, many of whom were white at the time as well, the kind of previous iteration of this board that you know, that was led by, you know, not Sean. Were really good friends with Lavelle. That was the, or sorry, with the superintendent. And that was the feedback that I got from, from people of all different all different interests and things that they were concerned about. And I heard about things that were much more close relationship wise and friendship wise and time spent together. And so I don't think I'm just sharing simply about the feedback that I got from people and that I have had conversations about, which is why I don't sit here and say Sean, what the heck are you thinking? You should never, it's just a question and just making sure that giving you an opportunity to kind of share, which I think that you so eloquently did, and I really appreciate that. But I want to be careful about us then getting into a, well, like kind of guessing where people are coming from or what their reasonings for having those concerns were. So I just, I, I want to be wary since I'm the one that brought these community members up.
I appreciate the question, the opportunity to respond.
And I guess it's related to this conversation, but I am very aware of the benefits that a board experiences when you do have a, a, a fairly frictionless or an amenable relationship between a board president and a superintendent. You get work done. You want people to be able to work together. And that's actually something that I was going to ask Jill in, I, I mean, you have, I've never seen you demonstrate um ill will or an adicalcitrance to work with somebody. But I guess that's something that if we shifted board leadership, that there would be a different relationship between the board president and the superintendent. And I think that's because I have seen Sean's professionalism. I do think that's something we benefited from, but maybe that's something that at, at least that's something that I'm thinking about that relates to this conversation. That it's like you want people to be friends, but you do want them to be friends, you know? Like you want them to be able to work well together. You want us to be able to be cordial. You want us to be able to like not have too much contention. You want that because it gets work done.
Okay, speaking of getting work done, I'm gonna point out something here, okay?
We have a.
We have, we have, we're still doing discussion, okay, right?
Yes.
I'm gonna try to make this quick and maybe this is the straw poll sort of thing. As far as I know, I don't know of anyone here who has interest in being vice president, okay? You do, okay.
But I would withdraw that depending on.
I nominate.
I'm interested, but um.
Okay, so I, I, I would like to humbly suggest, okay, and this is, but Sean has already said one more year as president. Passing the baton, I, I like Jill would be a very strong president or vice president. We have two very capable people. I, I love the idea of Sean, President Jill, Vice President Sean, next year, a whole new ballgame. And, and we'd have a really dynamic team, one with a lot of experience and one who really wants to do the work and change things and they could work together to do that. That would be my suggestion. I hope that maybe as a board we can look at that idea. In the interest of moving forward, I'm gonna be quiet now.
Erin, I would just add, uh, we found ourselves in a position I didn't anticipate us being in a couple of days ago. And in light of that position, when it comes to the discussion of the vice president, I would also offer my name.
Okay.
So in the interest of time, I'm not trying to, um, we have, we do have a motion on the table, which is to revisit the nomination. If there are additional conversations, let's have those, but I hope that we could continue the process and see if we can come to whatever the decision may be to move forward.
I guess I'd like to hear explicitly again, because Erin's suggestion, reactions to Erin's suggestion from Sean and Jill.
What do you, what's, I don't understand the question.
Her, I mean, essentially she's saying it would be a great situation this year to have Sean as president and Jill as vice president.
I have to work on having short answers. I probably wouldn't be a good, I wouldn't be good in, in front of Congress. Um, I'm a professor of education. Uh, I'm committed. My entire existence has been as an educator. My, you know, I started school when I was four years old, so for forty eight years, uh, I've been in school systems. I am committed to making the best education system we possibly can, and I will work with all of you, with everyone. I'm here. I'm committed. As my, I think I told you all, my grandbaby said Papa, you're really good at meetings, right? Like I, I, I wouldn't be volunteering for fifteen years if I didn't think that I was making some sort of difference in a positive direction and understanding that we have to reevaluate things because times change. If that is, my understanding is that is the motion on the table is again awkward, it's uncomfortable, but nomination for me to be president. Is that what we all understand? So we will call the question again. All in favor? All opposed? The motion passes. I think that was a necessary and fruitful conversation. We have more work to do. Everything that folks have said has been noted. And I appreciate your faith and I will do my best to make sure that those concerns are addressed immediately, not long term. If we can move on to the next agenda item, that is the election of vice president and nominations. And I'm wondering at this point in time if we should begin with dialogue, even though it's outside of Robert's rules, or we should just jump to a nomination? Yes.
Um, don't you have to take the oath now?
Yes. Are you ready for me, good folks?
Yes.
I, Sean Eversley Bradwell, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability. Thank you, Karen, for always reading. Nomination for vice president. Would you like to break the process and have a conversation first?
Oh, I motion we break the process and have a conversation. And I would like to point out that three members are interested in the VP job. Are you not? Sorry. And anyway, I'm gonna shut up.
Jill, go ahead. You were gonna, you were gonna speak.
I, I was going to nominate Adam for vice president.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by um Emily. Discussion, debate, and maybe we do the same thing that we just did before.
Garrick's, Garrick's interested. Can you say more?
Oh, oh, discussion.
What have I not, what role did I fall off, Karen?
Well, we've just had a discussion and I think we've seen two points of view. And now we've had a, a vote and we have a president. Um, the vote we just had, I think, to use an economist's term, reveals preferences. So I think there's a question now, do we want to have a, a vice president who on the earlier debate shares a similar view to the president-elect president, I guess, you went for president-elect president very quickly, but uh do, do we want to have a, a, a vice president who shares um the same view um on what we just took? Or do we want to have a vice president who has a dissenting view? And I think that's an open question, but I just feel like for the board that it's important that we have a choice on both sides of that question. And then the, the board can decide, do you, do you want a vice president, president who have differing views? Or do you want a vice president, president who share a similar view in the question we just called? So that's what I would say about that. Um, in terms of what I would bring to the table as vice president, I'll just make one and only one point. The practice of the board is that the president and the vice president respond to inquiries from the media and from the public first in consultation with the board. That's an area where I think we can do better. Uh, I think Erin really just offered some excellent points on how to do that. And I think over the last year, on two occasions when there was a need for a very fast and comprehensive response to media inquiries, I think again through, you know, reveal preference in action, um. I think I showed myself as a person who was willing and able to step up to that. So should I be vice president, I would continue to take personal responsibility, the thorough, fast and um accurate responses to media and public inquiries.
Thanks. Um, I guess a few things. Uh, well, first of all, I don't know. I, I don't think that Garrick and I are really like diametrically opposed perspectives. I think Garrick and I have quite a lot of common ground and a good, good working relationship. And you know, if you're a vice president, that's great. If I am, that's great. Um, no, I, I think one of the things that I've tried to do this year, and I think I've done well, is to try to have good relation with everybody on the board depending on perspective. Um, you know, I think I've been open to other perspectives. I think I've worked well with people. Um, so I think, uh, I mean, I would be delighted to be the vice president and work with Sean. I think we do have some different perspectives that we'd bring to the table. Um, I think between the two of us, we would represent the perspectives of the full board. Um, I think a lot, you know, or a lot of, large percentage of the variance. Um, you know, I've chaired the curriculum committee this year. I hope to continue to do that. I think I've shown leader. Um, you know, I've chaired the curriculum committee this year, I hope to continue to do that, I think I've shown leadership in that. Um, and I think being an officer requires a lot of time. And I do, I do have the time in my schedule to, to do that, so I'd like to, um, I'd like to put that forward. Um, so I, I mean, those are just a few things that I was thinking, I didn't know if I was gonna be, uh, running against anybody. Um, but I'd like the job, uh, again, if you wanna not choose me, that's also okay. Um, but hopefully you will select me and I think I'd be good at representing everybody's perspectives on the board.
Additional questions, comments?
I'm mindful of time.
I'm trying.
That's Sean's line.
I'm trying to make sure everyone feels like they're, they've been heard, right, so we're not. But if we're at that point in time.
Eric, what was it that came to light that made you wanna run? You said a couple of days ago.
Well, the whole discussion this morning. Yeah, I didn't see it. I, I guess, I, I mean, I, I really just feel like we, we had, we had a debate and that we should have a can, a candidate for vice president on, on both sides of the debate we just had, and then I think it's morally questioned. Do, I mean, Adam and I work really well together and share similar perspectives, I don't actually, I mean, I, I, I don't oppose, you know, a, 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 any nomination, I just think my understanding is the vice president and president work very closely together as a team. And we just had a vote where one of the candidates for vice president voted in the opposite way of and I, I, I guess I question whether that's gonna create a a, a, a difficult working dynamic, and so I offer my name as a person who was on the same side of the vote that was just called. And the thought that that might be a more collaborative team approach, so you know, I, I think, I, I, I leave it to others to decide whether you wanna have a mix and match kind of president and vice president or more of president, vice president who shares a similar question just called.
Well, so you mentioned the word preference, that we reveal preferences, I think, I I'm willing to guess that a lot of our feelings and a lot of our stances on a lot of these policies is quite nuanced, right? Like, I don't see us as extremely polarized and, and that's great, Aaron has gotten weird email.
No, sorry, sorry, guys, the Supreme Court says presidents have absolute immunity for clearly official acts, but no immunity for unofficial acts, and I just the state of our country scares the bejebers out of me, okay, sorry.
Okay, okay, um, so keeping us surprised of, of breaking news. Um, so I guess I'll say that, like, I'm willing to guess that many of our feelings are not extremely polarized, which is fantastic, and that we can like still bring our perspectives to the board, but I would ask, I mean, like, I think it's a good point. I'd ask Adam and how you said that you um have made efforts to have good relationships, and I imagine that would continue as vice president, yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, like, I, I guess I just think a little bit about when I was running for the board, I think you know, there were a lot of people that have, that approached me during the election and, you know, had different perspectives and feelings to say about different people. And, you know, I was often, I feel like I was often asked to kinda like weigh in on people's character or talk about different people, and the thing that I said to every single person that ever approached me was that I like every single person on the board, I think everybody on the board is a good person. I feel like I have a good relationship with everybody on the board to the best of my ability, and basically just that, um, you know, I, I, I sometimes have different perspectives from people on the board, but that I, but that I value everybody and think that everybody is like a solid person. Um, so I, I'm not worried about my capacity to work with anybody, I you know, we, we were choosing among candidates, you know, I did choose Jill. Um, I don't feel for me that that was like a referendum on me thinking that, uh, Sean is a bad actor and that I couldn't work well with him. So
I am a bad actor. I don't know how to act, but
So I'm not, I'm not worried about it from, from my perspective at all, and I'm, I'm sure that I, I know that I can, I can get along well with people and I can definitely bring different perspectives to the table, and I'm very collaborative, so, uh, so I'm not, I'm not worried about myself. And I'm sure Garrick will do a great job too, and Garrick and I will, will still be friends.
Co-vice presidents?
Actually not a bad idea.
Not trying to make, that has happened.
It has happened in the past?
Not saying it, but well, I should not have said that. Any additional conversations, questions? So then we'll follow the same process, we'll call the question. So all in favor of the rec, the nomination of Adam for vice president? All opposed? And an abstention? I understand, I understand, right, this is the, this is the difficult part of the meeting as well, right, so we'll
This is how our US president elects.
We will entertain additional nominations.
I nominate Garrick as vice president to the board.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Erin. Discussion, debate, conversation.
Wait, are we supposed to? Be nominating?
Uh, Garrick was just nominated.
So if I wanted Adam nominated, I would do that.
Adam was just nominated and we voted, but we, doesn't mean we can't return to that nomination.
We can wait it.
Yes. Additional. We're ready to call the question. All in favor of the motion, the nomination for Garrick to be vice president? All opposed? And no extensions.
Suggestion, um, as the president there's no reason why we couldn't jump ahead to my way of thinking to the rest of the agenda. And at least accomplish all the things we need to accomplish today.
You mean skip this?
Put it on hold for now.
Till the end of the agenda?
Yeah, go back to it then.
Um, to follow process, my apologies as a very par, poor parliamentarian, that would require um a motion to modify the agenda to add it to the end of the agenda.
The advantage would be that we give people a little more time to think and that we get this agenda done. While we still have everyone here.
And we watch everything that Adam and Garrick do.
If necessary, yes.
The, the disadvantage is that we lose people and they lose a vote, although we need to vote for most of this.
Voting before, right, like we did section five, section six.
So there, there's a motion to move forward to change the order of the agenda, to modify the agenda.
Agenda item number four, Jill, I'm understanding correctly, to place it as uh, agenda item, uh, fifteen before adjournment, is that correct?
Yes.
So a motion on the floor to move agenda item four to item fifteen.
And no matter what, we still need quorum.
Yes.
We still need five votes.
Correct.
Majority of the total number on the board.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So there's a, there's a motion, I have not
Oh, second.
Second by Katie. Discussion, conversation, I see some looks of We still would need to vote on it for that to happen, I just wanna make sure folks know. Yes.
That feels just kind of disruptive to the process to me, and I feel like we've been having a really good dialogue for the presidency and, and it feels like we, I don't know that we're gonna, we're gonna move our thinking on to other things and our attention will go elsewhere, and I think it'll be more difficult to kind of come back to these these conversations that are a little bit, that are very much related to what we were just talking about, so it feels like why put off what we can do right now?
Other thoughts, reactions?
Uh, I would disagree with that because we have to be ever evolving, ever moving, because last week we didn't expect two executive sessions than we had. And we were unfortunately here until almost midnight.
After midnight.
Right.
Okay, I could go, I'm, I'm, I'm ambivalent.
Are we ready to call the question or we want more discussion? All in, please, I'm sorry.
No question.
The question is to move the selection of the vice.
The idea is that we're losing Erin in a couple of minutes? No, no, I'd like, I'm, I, I don't know, cuz I'd rather have more voices here. Okay, as we're discussing I remember four, rather than the rest of the items that are like
For the most part perform.
Yes, there we go, yeah. Yes, I don't, I don't know how long I can stay, I'm like, answer some emails over here, like and there's childcare issues and my husband doesn't text me back, so I, I really cannot tell you all of the things.
So the question is there, so the question is to move the election of the vice president of the board to the end of the agenda. It's been moved and seconded, we'll call the question.
Thank you.
All in favor? All opposed? All extensions.
We're so bad at this, this is weird as the, as it's
Let's hope so, so that motion does not pass, so we, we are we are back to the election of the vice president and we will entertain nominations.
I nominate Garrick to, oh, are we doing in the same order or what? Okay, I nominate Garrick as vice president.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Erin. Debate, questions, conversations, discussion.
I mean, I guess I'll express my thinking if it's helpful for anyone else. I agree that both of you would do a great job, I'm apt to vote for Adam because I do hear Adam express um, his thought processes and maybe opinions more often. Um, and I think that's just as like speaking for myself, that's, that's helpful, and I think um, if we, and a couple of us have expressed this, a desire for more open dialogue next year, I think that that that's, that's why I would be voting the way I would for Adam.
Feel like I'm talking a lot for my first day, but um I am really drawn to having a um team, a president and vice president team that are not so aligned, I think that we have a lot of unique and important voices on the board, and for the same way that I would not be voting for Adam if Jill had won. I, I feel like it's really important to um, to have different voices, I trust that both Sean and Adam are able to work um, in a collaborative way together, um, and that because I trust that, if I thought that it was going to be contentious, perhaps it would be different, but I think that it's um, to me, very important that we have um, differences and um, and can kind of support one another and kind of rethinking things and prioritizing things in different ways.
My feeling is that I mean I, I don't, I don't see there some unification of Garrick and Sean. Um, the, what you spoke to with, with reaching out to the media, of course speaks to me, and you are good at it, right, like you get it, and to have that sort of teamwork from our board officers where you can both take the load of that, I mean, there are so many inquiries that we get where we need measured prompt responses, um, that are vetted, I, I, I think that you and Sean, Garrick and Sean would complement each other well with a lot of the work that you have to deal with as board officers. And I think, you know, both of you are so new to the board, um, I mean, I'm glad that Sean's leading up regardless of who's there, right, so.
I mean, we have mentioned time quite a few times, and that's something that comes to mind is that I get the sense that probably Adam and Garrick would both be able to respond to media inquiries. And it's, and maybe this is not true, but it seems like Adam has maybe more hours in the day that he could carve out for this, I don't know, but
Well, I would just say, I mean, I don't know, I don't know, um if I should be on the side of the one that wouldn't respond to the media, like, I'm not sure that Garrick and I are on like opposite ends of a spectrum there, like he would be the one to respond to media inquiries, but Adam wouldn't, I mean, I think I would say I would too, you know, um so I, I don't, I don't know that, that there's a difference, um, I mean, you know, in the sense of responding. I think, um, I mean, I think Garrick is definitely polished and gives good responses, so certainly like he would do a great job responding to the media, not, no uh, no concern there, just that I, I feel like I'd also do, you know, do the same.
I'd like to just remind us that it's not about who likes whom or who gets along with everyone. Our vision and mission is in alignment with the school district, that's who we are serving, the community and the school district. Um, communication wise, I've seen Garrett to be very precise in his communication, um, and and get in questions, get in ahead of questions and, and making a response. There, I've seen a lot of questions being asked of A- Adam through various email vehicles and all, and I think, um, Garrett would just go through precision and then know how to handle things as we go forth.
Um, I, I, I'll weigh in not on the two candidates because um strengths and positives, and so I hope notice that I would abstain because I think as Garrick said, right, it's not about a preference about who would do the job. Um, what I also know and I want us to bear in mind is that there are various other leadership positions that take place on the board through being chairs of committees, and so that's another way in which folks, um for lack of a better word, exert influence, if I could be, I, I don't know if that's the appropriate way of saying it, I'm and I don't know why I'm looking at Jill to, to answer that question, right, but I think there are other, there are we just bear in mind that there are multiple ways in which folks lead on, on a board. Uh, but if there are any additional comments, I, I'm mindful of time.
Are there rules about that, like can you be VP and also chair a committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, and we have multiple policies in board docs that um go through governance of the board as well as the administration and enrollment, everything.
Such great reading.
Things I wrote, I can number of them, I'll take that as a compliment, Keith. Alright, the nomination is, um, I lost the nomination on the table is for Garrick, can we call the question? All in favor of Garrett Lealock of being a vice president for the board? All opposed? So let's try it one more time?
I'd like to nominate Adam Grant Weiss for vice president of the school board.
Second.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Emily, discussion, debate, conversation, dialogue. Apologies. Alright, we'll call the question, all in favor of Adam's nomination? All opposed? You're good for it, and, and this is abstention. So I would say I'm not sure where this leaves us, other than maybe to address this at our next meeting. The board is not required, my understanding by New York state law to have vice presidents, we have chose to do so. Again, I said in the past, in the past, we've also had two vice presidents, that has happened one year in my time on the board. Uh, so that's an opportunity, but I would say that we would wait till we have a, a board of nine. We, we won't find ourselves in this situation, theoretically, because we still could be in the situation where it could be um, locked up, right?
Question, do, do we have um a realistic expectation that we will shortly have a board of nine? I haven't been privy to any discussions or announcements.
Mr. Fox is coming to my office on July fifth to be sworn in.
Thank you.
Which may mean that I'm hoping that we will have a board development session soon, which could begin with a Which could begin with a voting meeting to address this topic prior to the board development session. So whenever that would happen, we could do that um, immediately, or we could call a special meeting whenever we can get all of us together in the room as well.
I think that'd be good, because I'd like to hear, I mean, if we really do have two people who are willing to work more for this board in this district, that's amazing. And so I would like to hear maybe more about pros and cons of a two vice president structure.
And it'd probably be good for us to get um, some uh, opinion from NISBA as well.
Yeah.
What their take is on it, that's okay by folks. Does that seem like a, uh, it may, it's not a great path forward, but does that seem like the path that we have for at this point in time?
Yes.
Yeah, Sean, I think in the interest of, of, of just moving forward, um, I, I'd like to nominate Adam Grant Weiss as vice president.
Second.
Nomination on the table moved by Garrick. Uh, seconded by Jill. Discussion, debate, dialogue.
Eric's quietly also nominated himself to chair like all the committees.
That would be fun.
Uh, all in favor of Adam's nomination? All opposed? You got that and an abstention. Dr. Grant Weiss, would you please take your oath?
Yes. Okay. Um, I do solemnly swear that I will.
My apologies, you have to state your name.
Oh, yeah, yes, that's true. I, Adam Grant Weiss do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the state of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of vice president of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Fantastic. Thank you, board colleagues. Adam, I look forward to being in contact, that will happen soon, and um, I do think as long as that conversation was, it is a healthy. Dialogue to put things on the table and to keep us moving in the right direction, so I appreciate it. Um, and Dr. Blalock, uh, thank you for your um, for your act, I, I understand that that's, it's, it, it's noticed and it's recognized. Uh, we will move on to our agenda, if you can believe it, uh, to the appointment of district officers. We usually vote on these and blocks, as Aaron said, so it'd be the appointment of the treasurer, the appointment of the tax collector, the appointment of the claims auditor. This has gone through our board clerk, uh, with assistance from Emily as well as our business office, and so these are the names that are here before us. Uh, if folks, if we can have a motion and a second, and then we can ask any questions we like.
I move to appoint.
District officers?
Oh, district officers. Um, the treasurer, tax collector, claims auditor for the school year fiscal year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five for Ithaca City School District.
Second.
Moved by Karen, second by Aaron, are there questions, dialogue, debate, conversations? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Agenda item number six, the appointment of other positions. The appointment of the deputy claims auditor, the appointment of the purchasing agent. The appointment of the deputy treasurer, the appointment of the deputy tax collector, the appointment of the records access officer. Appointment of records management officer, appointment of asbestos designee, appointment of daddy, data privacy officer. Appointment of the dignity for all student act coordinators based upon building. Appointment of COVID nineteen response coordinator. Appointment of the treasurer of activity funds and faculty counselor for each of our secondary schools. Appointment of the deputy district clerk, appointment of workers compensation cooperative board. And appointment of the community members to the audit committee, I will ask that we table because we do not have community members at this point in time. And we'll work with folks to make sure that that takes place. Is everyone on the same page with that? So agenda item six point one four would be. Uh, on another agenda because we have not identified community folks to serve on the audit committee. So agenda item number six is quite long, uh, we'll entertain motions and then conversation.
Uh, I move to appoint other positions as laid out in agenda item six. Not including agenda item six point one four.
Thank you, Katie, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Katie, second by Aaron, are there questions, discussion? Conversations? Hearing none? All in favor of agenda item number six? All opposed? Any abstentions? Abstaining? Did we get enough? Did, well, did you get everybody? Alright, the motion passes. Um, uh, agenda item seven, bonding of personnel pertaining to undertaking. A motion to approve the bonding of all persons and positions required by law or regulation to be bonded through a blanket undertaking of a duly authorized cooperative. Corporate surety covering such positions as officers, clerks, or employees.
I motion to table item six point four, appointment of community members to audit committee.
Six point one.
Sorry, thank you, uh, six point one four.
Can we get a second? Second by Katie. All in favor of tabling that agenda item? Fantastic, thank you very much, Emily. Um, agenda item number seven, a motion.
A motion to approve agenda item seven point one pertaining to undertakings, which Sean just read.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, second by Emily, questions, conversation, debate? All in favor? We got it, the motion passes. Uh, agenda item number eight is designations. Um, it is also a lengthy agenda item of various things, there's one that I think we need, or a couple that we need to have some conversation about. And I don't know how, what's the best way to do it, if it's best to do the, I think it's probably best to do these individually because there's a couple that we have to discuss. So eight point one, the designation of regular meetings and discussion sessions.
Motion to approve the following designation of regular meetings and discussion sex, uh, sessions of the Board of Education. Be it resolved that the Board of Education will meet twice monthly on Tuesdays, a discussion voting session for in-depth public discussion and a voting meeting. Be it further resolved that a combined discussion voting meeting will be held when necessary with prior notice. Be it also further resolved that the Board of Education meetings will be held at six P M. in Lower York Hall, Ithaca High School, four hundred Lake Street, unless. A public announcement is made noting a change or a virtual meeting is required.
Moved by Aaron, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Adam, conversation, discussion, debate? All in favor of agenda item eight point one? Unanimous, agenda item eight point two.
Motion to approve the designation of the method for calling regular meetings and special voting meetings be in accordance with I C S D policy two three zero zero, calling regular and special meetings.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, second by Katie, discussion? All in favor? The motion passes, eight point three.
Motion to approve the designation that all existing bylaws and regulations of the city school district, Ithaca, New York operative at the close of the school year twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five be and hereby are approved. For the ensuing year or until action by the Board of Education changes or deletes such bylaws and regulations.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, second by Adam, questions, conversation, debate? All in favor? Eight point three passes, uh, eight point four is one that I thought we need to have some quick conversation about. It's designation of Board of Education standing committees. The committees that we've had last year are listed here, the only committee that I understand that the board is legally obligated to have is the audit committee. Uh, but the other committees we've used to do a, a bunch of work. And so here we have the audit committee, curriculum committee, facilities committee, finance committee, human resources committee, and policy committee. And so didn't know if anyone has questions, comments, suggestions, additions, deletions, just want to make sure that we have a quick conversation.
Quick conversation would be, we've been talking for quite some time about reenacting the legislative advocacy committee, I'm curious what how board members might feel about bringing that back.
Would it be under the umbrella of the Revenue Exploration Advisory Council?
Not necessarily, because there are other things that we, yeah, and we, we have really, I mean, we even laid some groundwork earlier this year in informal conversations with. I T A and others, so. I, I, I truly am curious what others think about this, because it's a, you know, it's an important committee. But uh, you know, you need to have the people on it to do the work.
I know that you, uh, Eldred Harris and um, union representation along with Dr. Brown and Lee Talke have met over the past year around some of these issues. Um, my personal thought, if I can, stepping out of the board presidency would be to make that an advisory committee. Um, which would allow us the opportunity to have other leadership as well as just board members, though I understand and greatly appreciate. The message it sends by having a standing committee and the work that the L A C, as I refer to it, has done. Has been nothing short of outstanding, including having laws passed at the statewide level. So I'm very much aware of the work and the need, I think we need one, the question for me is the format and or the, where it belongs.
No, I do like the, I mean, the advisory committees do allow for more flexibility, so I think that that, yeah, that's a great idea.
So would we amend item eight point five?
Unfortunately, my apologies, Katie, my, unfortunately, I don't think we would amend eight point five, I think what we would do is put it on for our next agenda so we could write. The charge that is necessary to pass an advisory council. Um, and I think we already have that language ready to go, it's just that we didn't put it on the agenda, but we could do that at the next meeting. And nothing stops us or precludes us from beginning that work immediately. Because we know the legislative session is just about to end, but they're going to gear up soon.
Yeah. Well, there's no further committees that we would like, or if we don't want to edit them, then I'm going to motion to approve the designation of the Board of Education standing committees for the fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. As follows, audit committee, curriculum, innovations, and strategic partnerships committee, facilities committee, finance committee, human resources committee, and policy committee.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, second by Adam, additional discussion? All in favor? Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, Jill is missing, so everyone but Jill, thank you. Designation of board advisory um, committees. Uh, everyone may not have seen the language, it was on the last agenda, um, I don't know if it's on board docs. I didn't check to see if that language is on board docs or not, I should have checked, I apologize.
Would be on the last meeting's. For docs agenda, right?
Yes, it would be, um, but I think it'd be important for us to read it briefly.
I mean, you're talking about the language of the explanation.
Yes, please.
Uh, I would like to, uh, move to amend it to replace revenue, revenue resources. And to remove the name of any specific institution, but to have language, more generic language of, of. Community partners or something like that, I, I just don't think we should name any one, one institution. Like every institution in our community is a potential collaborator. And I, 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 I suggest the word resources right on the revenue, because I think we're, we're looking for any. Third party that is willing to bring uh, resources, be they financial or personnel or otherwise to, to help the district, I still don't think we need to restrict ourselves to. Well, I'm sorry.
Understood.
That's a great idea.
In the interest of time, would it make sense for us to table this, to rewrite it and put both on at the very next agenda?
Well, so long as that doesn't keep that work stuck well. I just don't want to delay that work, uh, but if, if, if we can start making moves towards that work without. The, the resolution passing until next minute, it's fine.
Well, the um. Revenue exploration language for this advisory council does not name any institution.
Uh, it does.
The last person I saw didn't name one institution.
This, because I'm looking at eleven point eight in last week, June twenty fifth meeting.
If, if it doesn't, then I strike that, I strike that right, right, right.
Where am I? Oh, okay, thank you for the correction.
As currently stated, it said, and I'll read it with, with the modifications that you have suggested. In accordance with district policy ten two six zero. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Ithaca City School District seeks the establishment of an advisory council on resource exploration. The charge of this advisory council is to explore additional, can we still say revenue options?
Revenue, revenue or other, or something like revenue or other.
Revenue or other options for the district, as well as establish action steps to support negotiations with local institutions. Regarding increases in voluntary contributions to the Ithaca City School District. Is that the way in which you would phrase it?
Yes.
Did everybody hear that? The council will meet at least monthly, the chairs of the committee will update the board on a quarterly basis, and a final report will be produced.
So it'd be revenue.
It'd be resource.
Revenue or resource options?
Yes.
That fourth line.
And it would be a resolution for an advisory council on resource exploration. That'd be the title of the, of the advisory council.
I, I agree with the sentiment to keep it. Both open-ended. In many ways and very, yeah, very strategic, you know.
And I can send this language to all board members now, but I want to make sure everyone is comfortable with knowing what they're voting on. Debate, well, it hasn't been moved yet, it was a.
You're gonna say?
I moved it as amended.
And I second.
Moved by Garrick, second by Karen, as amended, and again, I'll share that language to Emily and to folks. Great, you already got it.
What about this, Emily? Oh, that, Emily. Oh, crap.
Discussion, debate, conversation? All in favor? My apologies, Jill, I can't see, yep, fantastic. Alright, so that motion passes as well, as amended, Emily, we got it, thank you very much. The designation of a delegate to the T S T Executive Committee. Uh, this is um, one board member from the Ithaca City, from all component districts. Serves on the T S T Executive Committee, so we would need to nominate a board member who would be willing to serve on that committee. And no one here that I'm aware of has done this role previously.
Can you refresh us on what is required in this role, Sean?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, it's a monthly meeting and um. Dialogue and discussion amongst the component districts and other board members who serve as the delegate to that. Uh, to that executive committee. And the committee, the meetings are at BOSI's right up on, um, across from Duett Middle School.
Do you know how long, monthly?
I think it's an hour and a half, maybe, good doctors.
A good question.
Yeah.
And it's at what time typically?
It would be at, sort of, the month.
Oh, that's why Eldred did. Change five board members who are not here to defend themselves.
Uh, listen, I, I would, listen, not that I have the extra time to do this, but I'm actually, I, I want to learn more about BOSI's, I would, I would like to do this. If that's okay, all the board members.
I nominate Aaron.
You're gonna commit.
Okay, here's a question. Could we, could Karen and I do the up? Is that possible that we're both designated?
My only concern is making sure that we're not outside of BOSI's bylaws. So I don't, I don't see a problem, we can say that and they can come back and tell us no afterwards. Gotcha.
Definitely.
Okay, yep.
Okay. So, okay.
Okay, so.
I say I move to designate. Karen and Aaron. See, we rhymed to make it easy. As the members. Sorry, this is just as the members of its Board of Education to be the delegates to the T S T BOSI's Executive Committee for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five fiscal year.
Second.
Moved by Katie, second by Adam, question, discussion, debate? All in favor? That is unanimous as well, congratulations, uh, Aaron and Karen, keep us posted. Uh, the designee of the impartial hearing appointments.
You, you can just go there.
Uh, has anyone on the board done this previously? Who is, Jill, you've done it before?
It's easy and I'd be happy to do it again.
Someone want to make a motion quick before Jill changes their mind?
To designate Jill Tripp as the member of its Board of Education responsible for appointing an impartial hearing officer. In accordance with the rotational selection process established by the Commissioner of Education in section. in section two hundred point two E of the Regulations of the Commissioner of Education to conduct hearings in the district pursuant to section four oh, four four zero four one of the education law.
Second.
Moved by Katie, second by Adam. Discussion, debate. All in favor? Thank you, Jill, for taking on that responsibility. Uh, the designate or designating official depositories, this all finance, you see them listed there. There's nothing new. Uh, we'll entertain motions.
Yeah, move to approve the designation of the following banks and or trust companies as the official depositories for the funds of the Ithaca City School District, Ithaca, New York during fiscal twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Just name the banks. Uh, Tompkins Community Bank, J P Morgan Chase, M and T Bank, Shimon Canal Trust, um, New York Liquid Asset Fund, First National Bank of Dryden, Five Star, J P Morgan Chase, Key Bank, TD Bank, and Taoga State Bank.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Katie. Discussion, questions, debate. All in favor? Yeah, motion passes. Eight point nine designation of official newspaper. This is usually a quick topic of debate, so I didn't want to rush through it, but, uh, let's move it and then we can have questions or conversations.
Motion to approve the designation of the Ithaca Journal as the official newspaper for the city's school district, Ithaca, New York during the school year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five for the publication of all legal notices and such other data as is required to be published by law for which the same may be qualified to act.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, second by Jill. Questions, conversation, debate.
Yes, why are we having Ithaca Journal? I am not in favor of this newspaper, not really a local newspaper, doesn't come across daily. It says it's Monday through Saturday. Doesn't, it's not delivered on a timely basis of physical paper to, um, whomever's on the delivery list, because I, I've seen that in action. So, and I've seen other, I haven't really seen any material about the school district come through this newspaper. I've seen it come through some online, um, periodicals, although it's been incorrect, but it's come through.
You know, I'd like to add that th- this might be something for legislative action to take up, because the state of local media is such that the, the bylaws requiring us to do this don't line up with the publications that are even available to do this, because this does not exist anymore. Local newspapers don't exist truly anymore. Um, so I'm not even sure how to pass this if we don't really have a local rag, if you will. Sorry, that's old school.
And to be, to be clear, the policies that, that dictate the type of periodical that we're supposed to officially partner with um, are at the state level or they are a district policy? State, they're state, right? Yeah, okay.
Emily, can I put you on the spot? I know that I asked you to look into this briefly and, um, could you just share what you were able to find? Not that it's definitive, but what you were able to find.
It's not an official partnership with any newspaper that we don't have, uh, if they're exclusive, you know, suits on things. It's just for the publications of the notices that are applied by law. Anything of this, uh, um, the annual budget election and people notice of, uh, public hearings, of co-conducted public hearings.
Hmm.
Um, the only information I got, um, at law and the form that just first is, is that, uh, newspaper of general circulation.
And previously, and again, to Aaron's point, how things change, I was under the oppression, even though I can't find it, that we are at one point in time told that it should be a daily newspaper that was also available in print. That may have changed. We can also table this to get an official decision. I don't think we have anything that needs to be published immediately, so we would have a week or two to be able to do something different or to get clarification about what that would be. That'd be, that's also presuming that folks would want another option as well. But so entertaining ideas or thoughts.
I guess my question would be, do we even have to have a designated, another designated outlet to say that the board drafted a letter? I don't know, commenting on recent events that were egregious in nature, that we wanted to actually make an official statement on. It would not have to be through this designated outlet. It could be one of our own choosing.
These are legal notices. The board's required to have legal notices, and so we're selecting the newspaper that we would be required to put our legal notices, budget hearings, dates of votes, things of that nature.
I, I would like to table this, and I would like to ask for clarification from, I think we have before, but from legal.
Yep.
Um, and, and really, I mean, NISBA as well. We are not the only school district dealing with this issue, right? This is a global issue, national.
Would you like to make a motion, Aaron?
I motion we table, um, item eight point nine for, uh, further discussion and consultation with our legal team.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, second by Katie. Any discussion?
No, no, sorry.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Nope.
Do we have to move to withdraw?
Well, you don't. Aaron, certainly find Jill to.
Yep.
So I'm sorry.
Is it either to just vote it down and?
Can I?
Yes. Withdraw? How do you withdraw it? But you, but that would be.
Oh, yeah, no, we can't.
They are not. But in the future, that would not preclude us from actually appointing them, yes, later.
Can I withdraw my motion, my original motion?
I withdraw my measure, I, I motion to withdraw my original.
All in. Second, the motion to withdraw the motion.
Then you're making, then remake the.
Uh, I motion to table item eight point nine for reasons I stated earlier that I won't.
Second.
Move by, we're okay now. Is our unofficial problem a turn?
Oh.
Perfect.
Sorry.
Yep.
It's all good.
EBS motion.
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
All in favor? Fantastic. Uh, eight point one zero designation of signers. Uh, we may be able to do the next four together, if that's okay for folks. Eight point one, eight point one two, eight point one three, and eight point one four. It'd be the designation of signers, the designation of internal auditor, the designation designated receivers of money, designation of independent auditor, and designated custodians of money.
I motion to approve items eight point one zero, eight point one four, the designations of signers, internal auditor, receivers of money, independent auditor, and custodians of money.
Second.
Moved by Aaron, second by A- Adam. Questions, conversation, all in favor? Do you have that? Two people are missing. We don't have, uh, Karen and Emily, but otherwise everyone else is in support.
Six.
Um, that brings us to agenda item nine, authorizations. There is a long list of authorizations here. I'm going to pause for a second to see if folks have questions or comments. This is going to be outside of process, because otherwise, um, I recommend that we move them as a group.
I have a question, Sean.
I anticipated that, Jill.
Yes, I bet you did. This has been kind of an annoyance to me for a while. I would like to remove item nine point eight authorization of cell phones for select employees. Um, I believe that the cellphone expenditure in the district is unwarranted and redundant, and would like further and convincing explanation of why we need to be providing cell phones for people.
I guess my question would be, we'll, we'll have there, my question would be, was, does that mean we would continue with current process until we have an affirmative vote or a negative vote, if that makes sense? Like, we have folks who have cell phones now. Would they?
We're not gonna, I'm not going to go out and take some away, but I.
They would turn them off.
But I mean, a prior agenda item essentially says whatever policies we have in place now go into this next school year.
But we are now into a new fiscal, you, new year, and we have not authorized the expenditure for cellphone of select employees. I, I'm just trying to make sure that we're going to be able to proceed as is until we have clarification to answer Jill's questions.
I, I have a question, so we can have clarification.
Yep.
I, I mean, given some of the positions that our staff are in, isn't a personal and business cellphone necessary so they can separate the two? Or not? Like, I, I just imagine the phone calls you might get if you only had one phone, or like, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, problematic.
Um, I'll begin by saying I've been hoping and wishing to get out of the cellphone business for a while as well. However, my read of this, and I'm no attorney, if we do not give authorization to use cell phones, then we would have principals and others today who would have to discontinue their use of. And I think that would create some liabilities for us. All our building level administrators have cell phones and are using those for business.
District issued.
District issued cell phones. And I mean, we could, currently, we do not offer a stipend for our administrators to, um, acquire a cellphone outside of the district one. So I, there's a lot to clean up here. If we wanted, I would engage, I would welcome a conversation and us to present to you a recommendation to move this forward, which may include or will include some negotiations and maybe a, a conversation in the exact session. Um, but I wouldn't, yeah, not.
So Jill, would a comp, I'm, go ahead, Jill, please.
I, I would be, I would accede to that, Dr. Brown, except that my concern is that in the la, we haven't really moved forward on this for the last two years. I'd like to see um, that any discussion at least include the possibility of a, a technological ability, which I understand from Zach, is a possibility, to separate your private line and your professional line. Um, and if someone honestly doesn't have a personal line, then of course we could get the one. Or in your case, I could understand why it might be necessary, but if it's possible, and I believe it is, to se, to have two numbers essentially, and you would know on your cellphone if it was a personal call or a, I think we could save a significant amount of money.
Yeah, uh, it's complex, and I, I'm just asking for some board direction here. Um, because this is an area that would require a lot of attention and negotiation, and if that's what you wish, we would go in that route.
As, as long as it includes that specific discussion, I'm happy with that.
Jill, would a compromise be to proceed as is for today with an understanding that it would be on the next finance agenda? The very first, if we could all agree that that would be an agenda item for finance, to be able to give some time, but to start that conversation the way in which you, you've asked, is that?
That would be perfect. Thank you.
Does that work for board members? Okay, any other questions about what's listed in agenda item nine?
Should I move to table nine point eight?
No, I think, I think what the, the compromise would be to approve with an understanding that we are going to come back and take a look at it with the data that Jill's asked for.
But it won't be the case that because we approved it somehow, if we did. Yeah, like in October, it'd be like, oh, well, now we can't, because we already approved it for the year.
We're both to do something differently.
Okay.
And I'd also like to check some of our union contracts, which may stipulate that they have actually access to a device, but yes. So if I'm hearing correctly, Adam, to your question is no approving it this today would not preclude us from discontinuing at a later date. Garrett?
It might be good to check with Kate. I know telecom privacy laws are really complicated.
Yep.
But like, you know, if there's a foil request or subpoena, I'd like to know whether that goes to a service or a device.
Right.
So it's not just about money. We're talking about foil requests. We're talking about legal and financial.
Well, yeah, what I, what I would, would I be concerned about is if we, I mean, I agree with Jill that it seems unnecessary for people to have two devices. I just don't want to subject an employee to the possibility of having their personal cellphone subpoenaed due to a lawsuit.
Understood.
Involving the district.
Yep.
I don't know the answers.
No, that, that's, that's a great point for us to consider. All right, so we'll put that on a finance agenda with those considerations, and I'll reach out as well. Uh, Kim, we have not moved this, Emily? Uh, we're talking about moving agenda item nine through nine point one, if everyone is in favor.
I motion to approve agenda items nine point one through nine point eight authorizations of use of telephone, wire and electronic banking services, uh, certain staff members to sign agreements, et cetera. Staff members to enter into agreements, contracts, or other obligations, certification of prey rule, cooperative bidding, invest funds, petty cash funds, cellphone for select employees.
Second.
Moved by, uh, Aaron, second by Adam. Additional conversation, debate, yes, Garrett? Yep, trying to jump ahead.
The gun, yep.
All right, we'll call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous. Fantastic. That brings us to the consent agenda. Um, our consent agenda is from ten point one, uh, through, if I can find it here, my last, are we really getting close to the last page? Don't give me ten point seven. Um, it also includes eleven, which would be the personnel report, uh, twelve, uh, students, thirteen minutes from the previous meeting, um, and that's where we would stop.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Adam. Second by Garrick. Question, conversation, debate. Hearing none. Yes, sorry.
Yeah, the question, um, why are there just a few of the principals that were?
Oh, the acting principals? Uh, Dr. Brown, can you speak to that? Um, from agenda item twelve or ten point two, we have acting principals listed, um, at various places, uh, but not for others.
I don't know. This is the first year that's been the case, um.
We're missing Caroline.
Yes, please. Right. Yeah, bu- by default, when a principal is not in the building, um, it would then rely, it would come back to the deputy superintendent or superintendent, um, by default. And so in the past, we were appointing associate principals to be principals when the principal was not there. So I'm assuming that's where we are now, um, but not sure. And I'm humble enough to say when I don't know, I don't know, um, beyond that.
Um, if that is the case, I may make a recommendation that we withdraw the original motion and table ten point two to ten point seven to get clarity around all of our buildings. And we have historically, if I'm not mistaken, included names as well of who would be the acting principal, and those are not present.
I think they are.
Gotcha.
I saw it somewhere.
Okay.
They're, they're not, they're not in here. Some, some of them are missing names.
Yeah, this is.
I can't get back.
You're logged in?
Yeah.
Some of the schools do not have, um, there's vacant.
Right. Right, so where, where we shouldn't be voting on.
Yeah, we gotta hold off.
When there's no.
Let's hold off on it. We, we've done this in August in the past.
Yes, we have done this in August in the past when we have gotten clarity on.
Yeah.
Everything. So who made the motion? I apologize. Adam, you made the original motion?
Yeah.
Are you willing to withdraw the motion?
Yes, I withdraw my motion.
Uh, can we have someone who would be willing to table ten point two to ten point seven?
I move to table agenda items ten point two to ten point seven for further discussion.
Second.
Moved by Katie, second by Jill. Discussion, conversation, debate. All in favor? Those items are tabled. Now can we go back to the consent with understanding that those items are removed from the consent and have another motion to move the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda minus the items we discussed.
Second.
Moved by Adam, second by Jill. Additional conversation, debate, or dialogue?
Um, I just have a, a request for ongoing meetings, um, specific to, and this is maybe specific to the H R committee, maybe not, but just when on the, um, the personnel portion, the personnel report of the consent agenda, if there are, um, I, I guess terminations that are happening that board members would benefit from being aware of, that we would discuss in executive session, that would be helpful to know, because that I.
It would just be helpful to know.
It would just be helpful enough.
I assume you're taking notes, Dr. Brown?
Yes, I got that. And the board can at any time pull an item out for discussion and or call an executive session prior to or during, as you've done in the past, a board meeting.
Okay, I think it'd be.
It's going to be hard for us to anticipate what may be questions, um, and Frank, and yeah. And there, when we're dealing with dozens.
And the procedure for that would be, say that we're in just a regular Tuesday board meeting, uh, Say that we're in just a regular Tuesday boarding meeting, a personnel report is part of it. If we notice something, ideally. You get an email beforehand, you, you, all of us. Or what if it happens when we're sitting in the meeting and we notice on the personnel agenda that there's something?
And prior to moving the consent agenda, someone can make a motion to enter into executive session. For the purposes of discussion of employees, the particular history of employees. Corporations. I'm going to go from there. But we would have to do that before it's moved or withdrawn that motion, then we can go into exec at any point in time as long as it's executive session worthy.
Okay.
Additional conversation. Hearing none, all in favor. All opposed. All abstentions. Brings us to agenda item fourteen. One is the adoption of the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five board meeting schedule. Is presented in front of you. Uh. Folks have done a really good job of doing two things with the calendar, just so folks know. We have tried very hard to not have board meetings just before a break. Or during breaks, and so we've moved meetings around. If it's. Winter break, then we don't have a meeting because we're not asking our employees to come in on days that are off. We've tried to pay attention to particular holidays whenever we can. To be responsive in that way, and uh we have moved around. Uh, I didn't check for November, um, but we should. Yes, we did, and we moved those meetings away from the November election as well. So we'll entertain motions unless folks have other questions about the calendar. Uh, and then one more apology. This year, it doesn't look like there's many, but we've tried to have board development sessions scheduled for any fifth Tuesday. Uh, right now, it looks like there's only one throughout the year, so we're gonna, we're gonna have to meet on some Thursdays. I'm just giving people heads up or another date. We'll find another day that works for folks. Maybe it's a Monday. Maybe it's Sunday at Jill's house. We'll figure out what it looks like.
Plenty of room.
Not on a Sunday.
No, not on a Sunday.
Or Saturday.
Someone want to move it unless we have other questions?
Or is it just fourteen point one?
Just fourteen point one.
So, oh, yeah, I do have a question. And eight point one, okay, eight point one, we designated Tuesdays as the. Need and time, and now we're just saying, yes, we go with the calendar that has. Um, regular monthly, twice monthly board meetings and committee meetings.
Yep, we actually have dates now attached on this, and so we'll be able to, if the board so approves, we'll be able to put this up so the community can know the dates in advance. That's.
That's the added benefit of fourteen point one.
Yep.
Wait, did we move it already?
Just to, just to be clear here, so the the move to having facilities and finance on Thursdays. Is. Just to deal with the calendar then?
Not every Thursday.
It's not every, because I see there's a, there's a, in November. Typically, on the twelfth, we would have, oh, why is, oh, because the holidays. Thank you.
And the election on the.
The election, right. Okay, so that's, yeah, because we did that this year as well. Thank you.
You're still waiting for a motion?
I am.
Alright, I move that we adopt the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five board meeting schedule as presented.
Second.
Move by Katie, second by Jill, and nothing prevents us from making changes as necessary. Discussion, debate. All in favor. Fantastic. And our last agenda item, I should not have said that. Uh, agenda item fourteen point two, a resolution to expend funds for new board member training through NISBA, and this would be for. Uh, board member Todd Fox and Emily Workman to complete the state mandated new school board member training that's offered through the New York State School Board Association.
I move to expend funds for board members Todd Fox and Emily Workman to complete state mandated new board member training courses.
Second.
Move by Adam, second by Jill. Question, discussion, debate.
I'll, I'll make one brief comment, and that's that I would urge both Emily and Todd. To um attend those meetings in person if there's any possibility of their doing so. I think it's a richer experience and. Um, more useful. So that's all I'll say about that.
Agreed.
I appreciate that feedback, and if I'm not mistaken, they do it regionally as well. So it's not always going to Albany, but sometimes there'll be one in Rochester or Syracuse.
Yep.
Um, but that is a great suggestion, Jill, I suppose.
I'd say also, just having done it, the, the, there's two trainings, um, the one about finance. You, I I was gonna say, the, the, the one that's just general commentary, you should probably do it as soon as possible because that will really help you like know what's going on. Actually, the one about finance, now having gone through a year, been on the finance committee, if you do it a little bit later, like, you know, toward the winter, when things are like cooking, you'll be much more in the conversation in finance, because I remember doing it early and then being like, oh, yeah, I remember reading that, but that was ages ago. Just throwing it out there.
It's good.
Okay.
Additional questions, comments? All in favor? The motion passes unanimously. Board colleagues, that was a long morning. I'm appreciative of the work that we've done. We know we have more work to do. And with that, we will adjourn our meeting for today.